Advisory Committee for the City of Lowell for the regular meeting on Monday, July 2019. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, roll call please.
Commissioner Chambers.
Here.
Commissioner Ellis.
Here.
Commissioner Ghadula.
Here.
Commissioner Plank.
Here.
Commissioners Cadwalder and Stravon are both absent tonight, and Chair Barker.
Here.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Dave and Amanda.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Folks, same side, they are excused. Do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Can I make a motion to approve the agenda?
In a second?
Second.
And discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of approving the agenda as written, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous meetings, June 10th, a regular meeting?
Actually, I have a problem with bringing up the CDB and vape shops. It was noted that it was Commissioner Cadwalder and Ellis, it was Plank and Ellis.
Where are you looking?
So, said, you know, it doesn't bother me, but it's, I can't see it correctly. So, let's see here. On the page two of the previous of the minutes, planning commissioners ask questions regarding the order and doing portions of the Maryland ordinance and more answered their questions. Also, Commissioner Cadwalder and Commissioner Ellis expressed their concern for the vape shops and other shops in towns that are selling chemical substances, et cetera, et cetera. So that should be Commissioner Plank and Ellis.
And I think that's backed up by the first page, which it says they absent Commissioner Cadwalder, so not sure if he was here or not, but that's what it says, so there you go. Sue, can we change that without making an amendment?
Yeah, you can just make a motion to approve that amendment as amended.
Okay, I would make that motion. So here's, okay, support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Folks, same side, minutes deemed approved.
Is there any public comments that you wish to address an agenda item that is not on the agenda as of this regular time? Okay, thank you very much. Old business, there is none, new business, Riverview Plats, PUD review, and basically this is a review for a rezoning from a mixed-use district to a PUD. And with that, I think I'd like to turn it over to you to, oh, no, actually, I would like the applicants, if one of the applicants would like to come up and in just a couple of brief minutes, explain what you want to do and what this rezoning is about for you guys, just in human terms.
Human terms?
Human terms.
Todd Shaw, representing Unity School Investors. So, Andy's done a super thorough write-up. I guess, to your question, what we'd like to do is take that property that's been an eyesore for probably 15 years and make it cool. Think people in community, as we're out and about, support it, will raise the tax base a little significantly. We estimate probably 200 grand worth of new tax revenue from it, and we did the antique wall about 12 years ago, and we did a nice job of that, and we'd love to do something similar here, so. I guess with that said, I'll ask some questions after Andy's made his presentation, if that's all right.
Thank you. Hi, David, welcome, yeah, please, come on out, let's, David is present, made it here, thank you. Andy, you want to start walking through the presentation here?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, we prepared last week a review of the project for you, it's the staff report, so I'll just kind of start off with some of the background here. As most of you guys know, this property has kind of sat in its present form for quite a while, school's been a, has been getting there for quite a while, there've been a number of property owners over the last few years who've expressed some interest in redeveloping that site, but unfortunately, it hasn't happened until now, of course. So what they're proposing is to, is a rezoning, so the property is presently zoned mixed-use, and some of you were here a few years ago when we went through the process of drafting and developing that mixed-use zoning district, partly to address typical housing developments also in the city, but also to also address enable redevelopment of property within the city in a more creative fashion that might not otherwise be allowed. So, when we did that, it enabled a variety of land uses on the site, residential, retail, offices, all that kind of stuff, and what they're proposing is something that is similar in concept to that. And so this is a three-phase project, so the way this process will work is that we'll look at kind of the overall thing tonight, moving forward, so we'll look at all three phases, understanding that phases two and three are subject to some slight modifications potentially moving forward. The applicant has provided us with what they are planning to do, but understand that, you know, sometimes with these multi-phase developments, the second and third phase can take years and years sometimes to come to fruition, just kind of depends on what the marketplace is like at that time. However, with, so with the first phase, that consists of the redevelopment of the bus garage, and some of those improvements, the second phase would consist of redevelopment of the school building itself, and doing that into residential units, and then the third phase would be constructing two residential buildings on the corner of Canyon Road that would also be residential condominium units, and then obviously those are individually sold as residences to buyers. This is kind of a complicated project and complicated site, not only because of the fact that you have two buildings already existing on the site, which is in itself somewhat unusual, often with PUD, you just have an empty piece of property, and they just tell you what they want to build, and then you review it in that sense. In this case, that's, there are two buildings that are existing, they're proposing to build two more as a part of that phase three, along with an addition to the bus garage in phase one. Additionally, the project is obviously adjacent to the Riverwalk, so it's a very high-profile site, it's also partly within the hundred-year floodplain, which is subject to that overlay district that we have, so there are additional standards relative to that that we'll need to consider moving forward. One of the most important things that we do, looking at this, is make sure that the application is complete, and they've submitted enough application, enough application materials for your review, so we're not looking at a half-complete application. They have done that, they've checked off every one of the submitted requirements as far as what they need to submit for us to consider the application to be complete, they have done that, so that's what gets them on the agenda and brings us to this time. From there, we move forward looking at the objectives and qualifying conditions for rezoning to PUD, and then we also have some standards for the actual rezoning, and then we also have standards for looking at the floodplain overlay, so there's a lot to go through, it's a long report, it's like 15 pages, most of our reports thankfully are not 15 pages long, this one is a little bit unusual, but we will go through all of those tonight. And then, kind of moving forward, the entire PUD process in itself is a fairly long one relative to other types of projects, that's because there's so much going on, there's multiple phases, it's typically a larger development when we deal with PUDs, and that's the case here, this is more complicated than some of the reviews that we've done previously. So, procedurally, what will happen is that the planning commission will review the PUD. At some point at a future meeting, you will make a formal recommendation to the city council to either approve or disapprove the project. City council will then receive that recommendation from you, and then at one of their meetings, they will hold a public hearing, and then they will make the final decision on whether or not the PUD project should move forward. If they also approve that PUD project, and the applicant submits all of the final site plan details to us for a staff review, so that we take a look at it to make sure that their final plans are consistent with what was approved by the planning commission and city council. So there are a couple of things about the planning commission to, and just a real quick question, when they submit those site plans, particularly for say phase two and three, they have to follow through on what the initial PUD was set up for? Correct. Yes, so when, so the PUD is a rezoning, so the property becomes zoned PUD, and with that, the site plan as they have it shown kind of becomes locked into that site, so they can't change the layout of the PUD or the overall nature of the PUD, except for very minor adjustments, you know, moving this wall five feet, you know, adding a parking space, planting a couple extra trees, minor stuff like that can be done, but they can't completely change the project after it's been approved without coming back to the planning commission, city council, and going through the same process again. So it's obviously a very transparent process, and that both the planning commission and city council take a look at it, typically when we do site plans and special land use previews, those are done exclusively by the planning commission and the city council, not involved in those. These, because we are making, because we are rezoning the property to a different district, if the PUD district, that has to go into account for approval. So, a couple of things, first of all, is that the ordinance allows for the planning commission to hold a public hearing on this if it wants to, and that's one of the decisions that I want you to make tonight, is do you want to hold a public hearing? You don't have to, the city council does have to, and they will be holding a hearing once they receive your recommendation, regardless of whether or not you do it. So, you can hold a hearing, you cannot, either way is totally fine, and that's something that's up to the commission and what you want to do. And then the other part of that is that you don't have to make, actually, I'm going to recommend that you not make any final decisions tonight, you can, so what I'm suggesting that you do is, is we'll go through all my report, we'll discuss the application, I want you to go through the merits if you're comfortable, if you like it, if you want to approve it, then my suggestion would be to direct me to prepare written findings that would, that would support that. And that's something that the ordinance requires your recommendation to be something that's done in writing, and so we will write out findings for you and then present them at a subsequent meeting for, for adoption, which would then send that to the city council in a formal process.
Andy, just a couple of thoughts here, do you need any decision on the tabling of the information tonight as far as making a decision?
You don't have to make a decision.
Or having, excuse me, having a public hearing?
I would like you to decide if you want to hold a hearing.
And do we need to do that at the start of this, or at the end of the?
No, I mean, what might make some sense is to kind of go through the application and kind of look at everything, and I guess it's up to you to just discuss if you feel like that's a process that would be valuable to the planning commission, understanding that it's not required, understanding that the council will want to do it no matter what, that's something for you to decide, but I would like the planning commission to make that decision tonight, and then as far as the application is concerned, you can, as far as, you don't have to direct me to do anything, if you just, you know, need some more time to think about it, if you have specific questions for the applicant, if you have, you know, some items that you would like to see addressed on the site plan, or some additional information you would like them to provide to you, you can certainly table the application, ask them for that information, and they will pick it up at the next time, again, that's something that we've done before with applications, where you would table it for them while waiting for some more information to, to man, or for some reason, again, if you're not, if there's something that you just need to, need to further consider, or questions you want me to research or something like that, you can absolutely table it. However, if you do feel like you have enough information to make, you know, some kind of tentative, you know, give me some direction as far as what you're thinking, then I would encourage you to do that too, you know, there's no need to slow this process down for no reason. But it is important that you guys are comfortable with, with what you're seeing, comfortable with having enough information, you know, we kind of want you to have enough information to make what you feel like is a important decision. So that's kind of the goal here tonight, is to go through everything, you know, listen to what's in our report, listen to what the applicant and anybody else has to say, and then kind of get to it from there.
Commissioners, just a, a couple of bookkeeping things here then, I would, I would think that we would want to do a table the vote for having a public hearing or not until towards the end of this meeting, I think that's probably the wisest thing to do, and then secondarily, at any time during this discussion, if you have a question, just butt in, do whatever you need to do to get the attention, and ask the proper questions, and get the answers that, you know, you need. And then, same with the public, at certain points in time here, we'll ask for public discussion, and I would ask you to hold off until we interject those points. As an example, there are 13 objectives that we're going to go through, and my sense is, is that we probably will take two at a time, take a stop, ask the commissioners if they have any questions, and probably ask the general public at that point. I may go four questions, it just kind of depends on how the discussion goes and what kind of objectives they are, some of them are relatively short, so we'll try to, try to keep everybody with the ability to speak in a relative framework, it's a, it would make some sense to talk about it when we are talking about it, and try to get all the information that we can to make the best decisions possible. With that, Andy, you want to handle the first three or two objectives, however you want to do that?
Let's do the first two, I guess, and then we'll pause and see, and then next time we can do three, we'll do three. Okay. So, yeah, this is, there are 13 standards, so there are several things that we're going to go through here. We have the PUD chapter of the zoning ordinance outlines the objectives of that chapter and the objectives of a PUD, we will go through the qualifying conditions, so in order to be eligible for a PUD, there are qualifying conditions that have to be satisfied, there's three of those, and then we also have standards that must be considered by the city in reviewing a PUD, there are six of those. So, all in all, we've got about 20 banners to go through, that's not even including the floodplain stuff, so I guess, my apologies in advance, it'll take a little bit of time, but it's important to go through the process here and to make sure that we're considering each of these relevant standards moving forward. With that being said, and I'm not going to read my remarks on these, I'll just kind of summarize in a couple of sentences where I'm at, and then again, I'd like the planning commission to kind of provide the main immediate description here, since you all will be the ones making the final decision. So the first objective of a PUD is to encourage the provision and protection of open spaces, cultural or historic resources, development of recreational amenities, and we're included in the plan other support facilities in a generally central location within a reasonable distance of all dwelling units. So our remarks on this are that, you know, this is a unique project, and it includes the redevelopment of the former school building and bus garage, you know, looking at downtown Lowell, looking at the master plan, the preservation of historic structures is something that is important here, there's a lot of old buildings, and this does not, just aligns with that sort of overall goal that's talked about in the master plan of preserving and protecting some of those historic and cultural resources. Similarly, the plan also involves creating quite a few residential units on this property. Again, I think this also is something that is in philosophical agreement with the master plan and with that underlying mixed-use district. For those of you who were on the planning commission at the time, we spent a lot of time talking about the mixed-use district and downtown development, one of the things that's really key, having a vibrant downtown, is having people living there, so that sort of generates some of that vitality, it helps generate some of that weekend activity that we like to see downtown, and some of the services that folks like to see downtown, so I think this is a business with that. It's worth noting, I think, that the development doesn't propose any sort of additional support facilities, so again, sometimes with these, you'll see residential development, and then along with that, there will be recreational amenities or other, you know, features or services intended to serve the people who live in the PUD, that's not proposed here, the ordinance does not mandate that that be included, and in this case, we don't know that it's necessary because of this location, right, it's a block off of Main Street, it's a small two blocks, I guess, off of Main Street, but it's very close to downtown and close to the Riverwalk, and it's close to a lot of those amenities that we would otherwise want to see in a PUD. You want to do one second one? Yep. Okay.
The second, Andy, one thing, the open space?
Yep.
Can we cover that in depth at some, some point?
Yes, throughout here, yes.
Thank you.
The second's, objective of a PUD is to encourage developers to use a more creative and imaginative approach in the development of property. So, the project narrative states that previous developers looking at this property, I mentioned before, there had been a few other interested parties previously, previous developers had proposed to demolish the existing buildings and just wipe the site clean and start over from scratch. The applicant then has, in our estimation, approached the project with the objective of preserving the buildings, which requires some creativity, and more importantly, some of that creativity is not feasible under the strict terms of the underlying district. So the mixed-use district has certain requirements in it that would make the project as it is presently drawn infeasible. There are certain aspects of that plan, parking comes to mind immediately, as well as some of the building location issues that would not be permissible under the underlying zoning. A PUD allows for some flexibility in that, so when you look at a PUD, the developer, if it's agreeable to the city, can be permitted to, you know, modify and be a little more creative in the approach, so they don't have to necessarily be setback, for example, or maybe they could put parking in someplace you already wouldn't or rarely wanted, if it makes the overall project and the overall contribution to the city better than what it would be otherwise. So, in our, and what we wrote here was that creating a design that retains the existing building in buildings and meets the primary and secondary front yard and block coverage requirements would be difficult under the strict requirements of the ordinance, there's, as I mentioned, there's, there are also some parking issues that come into effect there, so our view of this one is that we think, given the layout, given that they're looking to propose those two existing buildings, that a more creative approach is possible through a PUD that would not otherwise be feasible in a mixed-use district. Let me keep going, or do you want to stop at two?
Questions, commissioners? Andy, go. Keep going, okay.
The third objective of a PUD is to allow for market-driven development or redevelopment in places that are most conducive to accommodating additional activity. You know, again, this is one of those standards that, what this is saying is that we want to enable development in places that have infrastructure and are able to handle it. And this location, I think, definitely checks those boxes, it's an underutilized site, it has utilities, it has street access, it has all of that stuff readily available at the site, it's walkable, has pedestrian connections on the Riverwalk, head along the sidewalk. As far as the market-driven component to that is, you know, again, we didn't do a super in-depth study on this, but again, just like sort of first re-review, we performed a relevant market data, trend suggests that there is a fairly competitive housing market here, and what they're proposing here is the, you know, fairly unique type of development that's not ordinarily found in the city. It's a good infill site where residential densities should be fairly high compared to a lot of other areas, and so for those reasons, we feel like that's appropriate. One thing that I think the planning commission might want to discuss with the applicant is just some of the, if there are concerns about the overall viability of the project and the demand for those kinds of housing units, you can ask the applicant if they have, if they can share some information with you that they kind of helps support that, you can't necessarily solely make a decision based on that, but sometimes with these projects, there are concerns that you're going to approve a project that's not going to go anywhere, or it's not going to get completed, or there's some concerns about whether or not it's totally viable. So I think that's, that's an appropriate conversation to have with the applicant at some point this evening.
I was going to say, can we do it right now?
Yeah.
That is up to you, Commissioner. If we could have the applicant discuss the market redevelopment activity, and what market forces you see out there, or if you have any market-driven resources that we don't have here.
Second time I've done that. We've talked to brokers, we've done our own research, multiple listing service has a lot of resources available where you can identify niches and oversaturation, that type of thing, and that was prior to taking on the project. Probably our best statement we can make is currently we have over 30 people on a waiting list of people that are following the process through Lowell to see if it's actually going to happen or not, and I would also refer to Mr. Bob Calverin, who's in the audience, I didn't ask him to come here tonight, and first time I met him was tonight, he's a native, he's interested in the unit, and Mr. and Mrs. Lundstrom also are here, they're relatives of Lowell, and they can probably speak to it better than me, but there's people like them that want to be here because of empty nesting, professionals, we've got probably a 50/50 mix of people that fit the empty nester profile and young professionals that are working in Lowell, and believe that Lowell has a lot to offer, so I guess that's what I would say, and then you can ask them if they've got anything to add to that.
Okay, thank you. Would either of the people that were mentioned here, if they would like to climb up and kind of give us your?
But it's all, you got to do it in song.
Simply need your name and address with a helpful pen.
Eric Lundstrom, we currently live at 10300 Downs in Virginia Township, my wife and I are empty nesters, we moved here in 2004, I've been involved with the community both with the Chamber and Rotary for a number of years, I opened another business three years ago, and that's kind of taken me away, but we are very interested in the redevelopment of these buildings because it's, it's the heart of Lowell, and they are an eyesore right now, and I think Todd and Jerry are going to do a phenomenal job on the units from what we've researched and done, and we have a great interest in living right in downtown in the heart of Lowell, right on the river, you know, being able to kayak out your front door or walk anywhere, and it's just an extension of what has happened with the Riverwalk and the city of Lowell, and we all look forward to the new showboat when that comes too, but this is just another addition to the beautification of Lowell, and, you know, Lowell's have really respected and sought after community, have lots of friends that would like to live here, and with that said, that's my piece.
Thank you. Any other people want to say a word or not? That's fine, you'll get another chance, so, either way you want to do it, okay, we'll go on then. Andy?
Objective number four is to facilitate economic development through the creation of a mix of uses and rebuilding types. So, you know, again, there are a couple of things in play here when we talk about facilitating economic development, that means a lot of different things, primarily to us as planners with a project like this, that means that we're going to have a lot of new residents living downtown, so Todd mentioned the tax revenue piece previously, which is one part of it, but the other part of it is that, you know, the, I'm assuming that's going to be a positive contribution to those people it made to downtown Lowell, the combination of redevelopment of older buildings and the construction of newer buildings will provide somewhat of a variety of housing types or building types, again, they're all going to be some kind of attached units, not there's any single-family detached homes here, but different sizes, different price points, and, you know, I think that, you know, our expectation is that there would be some positive local impact in terms of revenue and economic development. Between the three phases, there's 44 units, so, you know, again, it's, I don't, I don't know that, that that number of units, and depending on how many people live there, how much of an impact that would be, but again, if they're sold and if they're occupied, which again, I feel like they would be in this case, that there would be some positive impact there. Number five is to create walkable developments with pedestrian-oriented buildings and open space that connects to nearby destinations or neighborhoods. So again, one of the key things that we've been focusing on in implementing the Lowell master plan is, and through this mixed-use district, is to develop walkable neighborhoods, walkable communities, right? So developments like this, I think, positively impact that. You know, it's, it's, it's right on the river, it's well-connected with sidewalks. There are some, there are sidewalks proposed within the development so people can get around. There's a little, there's a short proposed street in there, which we'll get to in a minute. So, you know, I think the walkability part is really important, especially with, with a project like this. If you're going to have an infill project, it has to be something that really fits in to and connects within the urban fabric of the city. And this project look like, looks like it does that. It occupies one city block. It'll have four buildings on it when it's, you know, when it gets to that third phase of being, being complete, it'd be one in phase one, one in phase two, and then two buildings in phase three. Each one of them would be oriented towards the streets, towards the sidewalk, with, you know, the overall design appears to be one that will encourage walkability connections to downtown, connections to the River Walk, and connections to adjacent neighborhoods.
Commissioners, any, any questions at this point? General public, any questions at this point? Please continue, Andy.
Objective number six, to provide for the adaptive reuse of significant or historic buildings. With the first criteria we talked about a minute ago, we touched on that a little bit. Reusing the school building and the bus garage, obviously, is pretty much the exact definition, the exact definition of adaptive reuse of historic buildings or significant culturally important structures. We think that that criteria is pretty easily satisfied because this is, you know, it's, it's cool, really. And so if, you know, finding a way to redevelop and use that building in a constructive way that contributes to the city, we believe is something that's, that would be a positive for Lowell. Objective number seven is to allow phase construction with analysis that subsequent phases will be approved as originally planned and approved by the city. Talked about phases in my opening remarks, this is a three-phase project. Like I said, the first phase is the bus garage, second phase is the school, third phase consists of the two additional buildings up at the corner of Monroe and King Street. One really important thing to note with phase projects when they're in PUDs is that each phase needs to be able to stand on its own and with previous phases so that they function independently. Sometimes PUDs that have two or three or four or five phases take ten, fifteen, twenty years to build out. I'm not saying this is going to take that long, but it could. You know, we don't know what, what the economy holds in the future, and if there's an economic downturn, it's, it is possible that, that, that phase two or phase three could not be developed for a few years, and so it's important to make sure that phase one or phase one and two together functions as its own standalone development and is not dependent on phase three or four in, in, in order to work. So again, we feel like that does that. It's important to note that the school building, there's a part of that building of, of the school on High Street that protrudes out into the right-of-way by maybe five or six feet, it's not very far. They've proposed on the site plan that part of, of the building would just come down, which is fine, but when we get to the point where you're looking at a phase two site plan, we'll, you know, need to see some more detail as to how exactly they're going to accomplish that, what the floor plan is going to be for that building and some of those additional details.
Andy, do we need to consider that now as part of the overall PUD since it is one of the phases?
Yeah, so it's certainly worth asking. You know, again, if, if it's approved in its current configuration, the site plan for phase two is going to have to match up with the site plan that they have for phase two now. And so if you certainly want to ask the applicant to provide some additional clarification there, then that would be appropriate. And, you know, I don't know how much of an answer he has at this point, but.
Mr. Shaw? Please?
We made application a couple of months ago, and we were told that we didn't meet the requirements because not all property owners consented to the PUD, but one of the property owners PM City. And so after some discussion, Jerry and I decided that, all right, if the city's not willing to figure out how we can pass this, the buildings panel there since the nineteen thirties will tear the six feet off. So that's what we're prepared to do.
Thank you.
Objective number eight is to promote flexibility in design and to permit plan diversification and relocation of structures. So what this standard means is that in a lot of cases with, with PUDs, again, they're, they're asking for some flexibility in the street requirements of the ordinance in exchange for what would be a better project for the city. That's the whole point of the PUD. So in this case, because they're utilizing existing buildings on the site, that, that in and of itself, you know, doesn't necessarily meet the in line standards of the ordinance. The ordinance for the mixed-use district was written with a more downtown-style development in mind. So a lot of the mixed-use district, for example, is out on Main Street, a little bit further east of here, where that sort of building style will make sense. And at the time when that was written, as Todd correctly pointed out, everyone that we had talked to, said, yeah, it was built and looked like something else. So we wrote the ordinance with that kind of development in mind because it seemed like it wasn't feasible at that time to use the school building. So that flexibility in design and diversification and relocation of structures, it's not a huge departure that they're asking for there, but I think the trade-off between the, you know, the ten or fifteen feet extra and setback in the front yard parking that they're asking for, kind of in exchange, if you will, for the location of the, you know, keeping the historic structure there is a, you know, that's the trade-off, I think, that is up to the planning commission to consider. We feel like it's a, it's a worthwhile trade-off, and, you know, your overall development is, because they're existing buildings, there's some limitations that are already because you can't pick it up and move it.
Questions, commissioners?
Objective number nine is to promote the efficient use of land and facilitate a more economic arrangement of building circulation systems, land use and utilities. You know, again, because we have a couple of buildings that are existing here, it's fairly efficient the way that they have it laid out because they're using the existing buildings. Talking about vehicular circulation and sidewalks, that also appears to be fairly well-designed. There are some internal sidewalks on the property that, that provide pretty logical connections to existing sidewalks surrounding the area. Do have a couple of comments which we can get into on the site plan specifically, where we think they might be able to extend a couple of sidewalk connections within the site here and there, just to make the circulation pattern a little more, a little easier for, for residents.
That wouldn't have anything to do with the next discussion, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we can get into it, there's, so if you get to the report, I have some discussion standards here, and so we'll get into that a little bit. Hopefully you can call it upon the screen if I can point out what, what we're doing here. Objective number ten is to minimize adverse traffic impacts and to accommodate safe and efficient pedestrian access and circulation. Again, this is similar to the previous comments, so there's some internal vehicular access proposed for private drive and two curbs, one on King and, and one on Monroe, so what 's proposed is that there would be a street that kind of runs right through the middle of the parcel coming south off of King Street, take a ninety-degree turn and then head out to Monroe. There are sidewalks throughout the site. You know, there are a couple of, again, questions that we have about pedestrian circulation and how things are intended to function there, but as a, I guess, general comment, we feel like that there's reasonably adequate circulation for, for both vehicles and pedestrians. They have the parking area shown in a, in a dimension that needs the standards of the ordinance, and they also have some enclosed parking on the site, you know, garages and things like that for common owners. Objective number eleven, to provide for redevelopment of sites and or buildings that are underdeveloped or have fallen into disrepair. Again, we touched on that earlier, this is, the site is about as fit as it gets as a site that is underdeveloped or has fallen into disrepair, and this is certainly a positive step in redevelopment of those buildings. Now we've got two more, you want me to go through the last two or other questions?
Please.
I have, can we back up, go there to Todd, please?
Yeah, sure.
On the sidewalk, Andy, you said that there was some concern, and the only thing I could see, what I had was concern was driveway coming in, sidewalk on both sides of the Monroe entrance. Because then it connects with the sidewalk for the, if you just turn it around there, then that connects with then the parking garage that they're proposing, and it just seems to me to close people around a lot better than...
Yeah, I'm going to plug this, my computer here got the, got the site plan up on it so I can... So Marty, I think the area that you're talking about here, if they will come up there, will you?
Yep, there you go.
So you're talking about this connection right here, over to here?
Yeah, swing that down, follow the, just like you're doing on the, on the...
Yeah.
North side or the south side. The north side just kind of mirrored, and then people come and, to me, it just flows a little better.
Yeah.
Marty, that's a good idea, an absolute problem there.
Yeah, the other one that, that we noted in our review is that there's a sidewalk shown here in phase two that comes up along the east side of the school and it just kind of stops here, and this could probably just extend to connect to this proposed sidewalk here. Again, fairly minor detail, but just in terms of circulating people around the site, we think that works. And then the other comment that we had is with this proposed open space area down here, just kind of a general question as to how that's going to be used. You know, there's some proposed landscaping for that, for that area there that, that we'll talk about, is that something that is going to be like a plaza or a pedestrian, you know, not just an open space area?
It's going to be a boat and turn them around.
Yeah, right, I mean, that's kind of what it's used for now, right? So again, that's, that's a general comment that, that we have there, these are kind of minor site sign details, but it might be worth some conversation here just to see what's exactly the vision, because it's not totally clear, but yeah, those, that was one of the issues with the, one of the questions, I guess, or observations with the...
Yeah, that open space, I just kind of see that as a green space for the people that are living there. They're going to have family members over and have a large group of people, it gives them an area to go out and enjoy the weather, be very glad of the river. I mean, that's kind of the unique thing about that place.
Andy, since we're right there to the, just to the right of that open space, there's that future building, twenty-five hundred square foot?
Yep.
And yet on the original, it, it's already there, so why future, why the word future, I guess?
That was another observation that, that we had, so the applicant probably should somebody up that one for us. Todd?
Yes.
Thank you.
So three things, that other sidewalk extension, Kevin and I, we're talking about that, that makes perfect sense, so no problem with that either for you. And the future of building note, we don't know where that came from. So I was focused on a lot of other things and checked the box and all right, good, this middle, and I was no longer looking over there and that crept in there somewhere, so I had an eraser, I, you erase that right now, but...
Okay.
Regarding the open space, probably more importantly is, I want to take opportunity to introduce the team that I brought with, and I probably should have done that earlier so that if you have any questions specific to them, we can address them to, or we can ask them to address the questions. Got Chris, who's, looks like he just got back from boating, but he's our contractor. Chris's reputation is high-end residential homes and commercial projects about the site, so he's a wonderful fit for this. There's questions about architectural materials and stuff like that, and he can address that very nicely. Some of you know Mark Anderson, he's a guy with a great tan right there and a blue shirt. I'm going to ask Mark if he can address open space, and I don't know, staff, Sue, do you have the landscape plan that you can, can be pulled up?
He's got some no ones here that he dropped, Mark dropped off too, so.
So Mark, could you come up and address that? And then Kevin, Rosine, who's been sitting next to me, is the engineer for the project, and so we get into the weeds regarding engineering, that type of stuff, he's available. But Kevin and I were chatting earlier, this isn't a complicated site in our perspective from a getting it done or from an engineering perspective. It is maybe for a small town because you just don't see this a lot, but it doesn't intimidate us a lot, so. With that said, Mark, you want to share your open vision, open space vision?
Hi, everybody. I'm from Tier Verity Landscaping, I've done several projects here in Lowell. As Todd had mentioned, we've done buildings like this before in Grand Rapids, done a lot of houses with Chris, so we have a pretty good relationship, and as Todd said, it's a pretty nice team. The open space is really the focal point of this entire site. For the community itself that's going to be living there, this is going to be the primary area that they're going to want to use. So when you talk about how this was laid out, it's kind of like creating pockets. If you've ever been to like Spectrum Health or Mary Freebed or Grand Valley University and you see some of these tight spaces that are very challenging to make them usable, this is what we've done with this area here, is in a nutshell, to make it simple, if you took a five-foot sidewalk and you, and you made it all the way around this, and then you created pockets in the landscape so that people could sit separately and enjoy the outdoors and enjoy the river without having to sit there with thirty or forty people. That's why this, this space was created this way. The main thing about this is the larger area of the concrete, if you take five feet out of that, that's five feet of sidewalk, so that twenty-foot space that's facing the river is actually only about fifteen feet. That allows us to put tables and chairs and park benches and kind of blend in with the, with the river landscape that's already there. So this entire area, basically what I've done is created a landscape plan that'll match what's there already. So it'll blend in exactly what it's there. So it's going to be very organic, there'll be a lot of perennials, a lot of grasses. The main thing is going to be trees because these buildings are tall, so when you're sitting in this courtyard, you'll be, you'll be, you'll feel like you're separated from these large buildings that you're sitting right next to you. You'll be looking at the river and, and obviously be able to enjoy the space, and that's why we've created that. The small area that we have in the bottom left corner will be for storage of kayaks, and that big green center space will just be landscaping. And that landscaping is intended to break up that site, so it's not one big open space. So basically, if you look at that, there's about six or seven different spaces in that one little area. So if you were living there, you could, obviously you could have friends over...